I'm gonna laugh when we call you back in in about ten minutes. We need to go back in and close session.
I did my exercise.
Yeah. Thanks for show.
I put some stuff out home, grab it real quick.
Yeah, leave it up, leave it up.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Christmas time.
Okay, so, so we went through and on tab one here. Left the starting salaries the same, but changed the steps in between to the flat five hundred dollars. And then on here, plugged in what those adjustments would be, so total of sixty-one thousand one seventy bucks. Anybody in particular you wanna look at or scroll to?
So what is the brown highlighted there? I mean, is that people that is that affected or?
Uh.
They were already over.
Yeah, they were already over the step that they should have been. They still got the five twenty, but they didn't get any additional adjustment.
Okay, scroll up.
Actually, email, did that calculate right? Did it calculate their five twenty? I don't think it did.
Yeah, you took it out.
Okay.
So they're getting that five twenty and the adjustment, or one or the other?
Yeah, so it's taking the five twenty off first, so like if I plugged in, you should be at thirty-six and you're only at thirty-four. It takes the five twenty off and then does an adjustment just to get you to the thirty-six. So the cola is before, so like the salaries were proposed, they should be the January first salaries for those positions. So would include the cola for, you know what I'm saying?
So current position to where it's supposed to be and then put the cola and then put the adjustment?
No.
Okay, so current position plus the cola.
Right, and then if you add a difference still between where you are after that cola and what the salary for nineteen would be, you got an adjustment.
So can you go up some more?
Yep.
You have a comparison as to, if you had a field in there or can you show what the other proposed was versus this one and the adjustment or?
Um, I didn't do it in the spreadsheet, so, um, but I can.
I had it open down below.
And so what's the difference again between?
Is this.
What's? Ninety-four thousand total, adjusting for them to sixty-eight or something like that?
Oh, it.
Oh, it acts funny every.
Chris has the original one on his hand.
So this ninety-four oh seventy oh nine was the original adjustment proposal.
Yeah.
And then the new one. This one. Sixty-one one seventy-six.
And explain how the difference, it's the difference between the steps.
Right, so in the sixty-one thousand, it's only five hundred dollars for each longevity adjustment. In the ninety some, it's based on fifteen percent between the starting and eight years. So the higher the salary, the bigger the step to get to that fifteen percent mark.
So, something wrong here?
I think something's wrong anyway.
Something wrong, so I want to grab these.
Well, I don't think this is the right one anyway, Daniel, 'cause this has the two open, we filled in their names.
Get, get more in this scenario than it was in the other.
No, this is the wrong one, well one. That's not the right one, 'cause I filled in all the open positions with their names. But this one is the one of, this is.
The one above it.
Well, the sheet one.
But you haven't touched that one since October or something?
Sheet one is the right. No, that's not the right step, David. This is the wrong one.
On, what, we got the wrong one?
Yeah, it's the wrong one on the flusher.
I'm gonna go get your flusher.
Sorry. Oh. When I just emailed, did you see it pop up? She couldn't hear us or we couldn't hear her?
It was some good pulled pork, it was good.
Was it?
Yeah.
Had lots of sweets out there too?
Yeah, they had, the judging contest was on desserts.
Good crowd?
Yeah, you'll have to do it shifts, 'cause they're open, so.
They do it back in the Cosmo training room?
Uh-huh, yeah, that's.
Got a lot more written there, both his conference room and stuff.
It really is, it's.
Is that the old one there? Is that the original one?
Yes, yes.
We saw ya.
See how, oh, this is gonna work. See if this is the original charts, see the sixteen hundred, thirteen hundred, seven hundred different amounts. What nine eleven, she's saying from the top to the bottom is fifteen percent? But all the other charts are five hundred dollar increments. So in other words, our one year is five hundred versus, uh, equipment operator is six twenty-five, and everybody else is this top. And now she was going back to put in the five, five hundred dollar amount.
The reason we changed those steps on theirs is because we met with them several times and they were arguing that they have so many long-term employees that the five hundred dollars wasn't touching half of them.
There wasn't enough steps?
Right.
Not enough years or nothing?
But we had to, that's why we changed the adjustments on theirs.
I mean, they have particular people that they mentioned that they couldn't lose and those people weren't getting anything in that plan.
In the five hundred dollar step plan?
Yeah. But I also tried to tell them this was a one-year fix to get things fixed and going forward, we would probably go back to colas and merits, 'cause the steps go away.
I was just saying, we fixed it a couple of years ago.
Those other long-term employees in other departments too.
Four years ago, longer than I thought.
Yeah, 'cause I, I sat in on that, that was before I, so that was probably all September.
I'll take a look at the five hundred dollar one too, but I don't know if I can stomach it.
Okay, you can use your computer.
My computer's been confused today too.
Their name is same, probably it probably is getting confused.
What the hell did I just do?
So, so what are, I mean, so if you're not gonna do this, then I gotta do something here that you're not gonna do anything across the board or?
This one, I see kinda same as EMS, except for EMS, we did as recently as last month. Public Works we did, and I know it's been four years ago, but there's a lot of other ones we haven't done really anything with. So I kinda don't really wanna do anything with this one.
It's on your D thing, and you gotta do that one to close.
I'd, I'd rather just give them cola raises all across the board, but if you're saying we could, we've gotta do, if we do the same for one, we have to do it for all, so we have to do the same for all as we do for one.
Yeah.
Or we give them a merit and say, here you go Larry, we're gonna put this in there, you figure out how you think it needs to be divvied up, what needs to be corrected.
One concern is the people at the bottom end.
You don't think that's where it'll get corrected, or you're thinking that will be?
I think that every time we give them a merit, they divide it equally among their employees and that's how it goes.
Well, I'm telling them to give us a plan and they don't get the money till we approve it.
So sixty-seven one each, that one's the right one. There is a little, there, the three you see highlighted in orange with the five twenty were open positions when we proposed the budget, so I had to add those back in, 'cause I had them zeroed out.
Either that or we take.
And this one needs to come out.
Take all of that, we only have one position for that spot. Like, we only have one director, so you don't have to worry about one director being there for one year and one director being there for eight years and making the same money.
So you're just gonna decide what the new director makes when you have to hire?
Yep. We did that with the EMS director too, it was market-driven. I think we'll have people standing in line for Public Works Director. Now if Eric says, look, it's not worth an eight thousand dollar raise for me to go to be a director, then that's fine, he can stay as engineer. I just, we did this four years ago for him, so I just. There's some big jumps in there. Biggest one was the director.
Bringing those increments back down to five hundred, they're not as big. This is the new one that she went upstairs and reworked.
So about thirty thousand difference?
So the highest amount is twenty-eight, I don't know.
There's thirty-three.
Yeah.
I'm all for getting the starting salary for maintenance one worker up there a little bit too, to try to recruit some better employees and such. And I see what you're saying about it's gonna change all of it.
Couple fours, but before.
But I think we can stop that somewhere. So how come like Kevin and Baron, or Kevin Bishop and Berenson?
Operator two.
So Bishop's been there since one, Berenson's newer, fourteen.
Beren, okay, Bishop's been there five years, Berenson's only been there one, and there's less than a thousand dollars between them.
Yeah.
And that two years on that position, that's high, not higher?
Not higher, that year.
I just, I don't see doing that, if, I'm not out there with ever one of them, but there might be reasons why there's only a thousand dollars difference between them. Maybe he didn't get the merit raises and wasn't worth it, maybe he's not a go-getter, so, I don't know. I don't know if there's any plan that's gonna be perfect. I'm not gonna, I'll pick my fights on this one. If you two are fine with it, I'm not gonna waste our time sitting there fighting over it. I just, my thing would be for, not as much for the director, I don't want it to be so top-heavy. I'd like to take care of some of them that are making less, I think it's gonna mean a hell of a lot more to them.
So also in changing that to the five hundred, that did away with Larry Ben?
Where's his, oh, there it is, right there.
I mean, that did away with N, that's.
No, I didn't see that up there, man.
It's just a road superintendent, that's road superintendent.
I see it now.
His total was wrong or something? Didn't that column M's, N's supposed to be the total?
What?
N, the total.
N. Column N.
So that's what the total would be if it was according to this scale chart? So that's the adjustment zero is showing, you're not looking over that.
Yeah, so we didn't go through, like, this is just where he should be, so this is actually gonna stay where it's at.
So the top appears.
So the total in what they're, all I was getting you was the adjustment.
His was eighty-four five plus five hundred a year or whatever.
Yes.
Puts it at eighty-eight five, he's over it, so it stays with the blue number.
Right, so the total salary in this spreadsheet's not right, just the total adjustment.
And I mean, I, I hope that's not a slap in the face to our directors, I just, that's just the way I see it.
So what is, what is column N then?
Just. M is the difference between N, if you take out J and K.
Okay.
And only if it's more, if it was less, I zeroed it out, so if there was a negative number, it got zero.
So their salaries are, uh, column J or?
Well, so it depends, so if N is higher, they got an adjustment, it's N. If it, if it's zeroed out, it's actually J, 'cause their salary won't decrease.
I see.
It was just, this was done on the fly, just to get you what the adjustment would be.
So, I guess, two questions. One big one, are we going with what the budget officer presented and are there steps that she presented and the adjustments? Or, um, what do you want in the budget for two thousand nine? And, and thinking about changing this one back to five hundred in between each step or leaving it to where it was?
Debby?
So.
Debbie.
And lots of caveats.
So if you take.
Every time I about get to where I'm reading something and comparing something, they decide to move it.
She's moving it.
I know. I was calling her Debbie, now could you do that to me?
Three percent of their total salaries would be forty-eight thousand eight seventy-eight. In their case, it's, it's more than three percent.
This is.
Total.
Yeah.
The other one's even more than that.
Right.
But.
The other one's probably eight percent.
So, do we have some people that have been there for twenty years, like an operator, that whatever, they get zero adjustment, 'cause they're already over it? That somebody's been there for eight years is gonna be making the same? If somebody's been there for twenty, it's getting zero adjustment, 'cause they're already at that level, at the highest level?
It depends on what their salaries are, it's just saying they're over what that.
If they're over by one dollar, what we're doing is bringing somebody that's been there for eight years up to that level, so somebody that's been there for eight years could be making one dollar less than somebody that's been there for twenty.
If it was one dollar, yes, in that circumstance, you would hope that they're making more than the one.
If they would have moved up. That was ninety-four plus.
But that's not necessarily true, so, I, I don't know, let's.
So three percent.
There's nothing saying they're making more than that though.
Three percent in general fund would be one sixty-five, so the two, the adjustment and the cola together don't equal one sixty-five. So in some circumstances, it's more than three percent and the others, it is not.
It is less than one seven percent.
But part of the reason public works is so high is because we did, we took that bottom starting position and bumped it almost two dollars. So every bump, every position above that had to bump to get above it. That wasn't necessarily the case with some other departments.
But you're right, from eight years to thirty years, I don't know where those employees found.
Yeah, 'cause there's a couple of years in there, there wasn't much. And you know, that was ten years ago, so there wasn't much to go on and.
No, there was two, we got nothing.
So somebody could have started eight years ago, and we've had a few of them in there, and some merits.
I mean, that's across the whole county, not just in there.
So if you look at Travis Asley, twenty-two years as an equipment operator one, where is somebody that's close to the eight mark?
Or ten, it's good.
So.
Title.
I forgot that tier.
Right, but that would go to thirty-four, one eighty, and seventy-eight.
Yeah, there's public records.
And Travis Asley would be at thirty-four.
So, ten years is service more?
I think it's a great start, I think it helps to have a starting wage. I'd hate to do it and then we find out that after we maybe hire a consultant or something and I think we should do it differently. To, uh, you know, it's up to you guys. 'Cause you're not gonna take it away.
No.
I'm just kidding.
You get our biggest departments taken care of a little bit, that's.
So what do you want to be in there? Just a flat two percent?
Just the cola.
And how do you want the cola figured? Same, a flat amount across the board?
I like a flat amount.
I mean, I think it does need to be.
Are you asking if I want the same amount as everybody else, or you're saying now I can change it for them?
No, what dollar amount I'm saying.
We're asking what you're proposing.
So across the county as a whole or for PW?
Well, I guess, every, well.
We gotta know for everybody.
Law enforcement and EMS have said they're not taking a cola.
'Cause we did their.
'Cause we did their adjustments already.
Yeah.
So it would be what kind of raise do you want in the budget for general fund assessing public works?
What would it come up to, about fifteen hundred if it was the flat amount?
No.
Depends on what you wanna get, I mean.
What kind of percent or what, what salary or?
To get to, what percent are you trying to get to?
You said five twenty is about one percent, right?
It depends how much you make.
No.
Well, I know that, but across the board, if you took.
No.
All the people, average their salaries, take one percent.
Average salaries, low thirties.
And divide it by three hundred and fifty, or however many people we're dividing it by.
So right here, public works, one point six, three percent, three percent is forty-eight thousand.
Okay, divided by number of employees.
Find that by forty-two.
Forty-six employees, so that's a thousand bucks, right?
Forty-two, I guess.
So just do that. Do that across the board.
Does it cola or merit?
I was always a big fan of merit, but, um, problem with merit is when people split it evenly, it ain't a merit, it's a cola.
Exactly.
Um, so, I mean, shit, you shit can that deal, um, and you might as well give a cola and, um, you know. People aren't doing the job and they just need to be fired, so.
Well, you got some elected officials to that merit, they give it to people who really don't need it as much as they want to do.
Or they, or they do, some of them do give it to certain people that they needed, but.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously it, it skews the, the whole thing or. I'm moving forward with one of these proposals, I'm just still not sure which, I mean, I don't know that I'll make a decision today.
Well, let's go, I mean, to give you time to think about it, we can talk about the other stuff. Which one, which way you going Sam? You got a particular?
I like the lower one.
You like the five hundred step?
Yeah.
So. I don't know, if you sit down with it and play with it and you come up with something totally different that you wanna propose.
Is that still taking into account the starting salary, it's just the step for years is five hundred?
Yeah, so the starting salary didn't change in the page chart?
I just, we did the adjustments four years ago and, you know, some of the other departments, if we make adjustments, some of them got kept up.
This was the original page chart. This is the new one, so starting salary for each position stayed the same, 'cause we did that as a comparison to get to what that starting should be. It's just the steps in between have changed.
Can you send that to the after-year commission audit budget for nineteen, in case Chris wants to?
They might, I don't know.
I'm sure.
Just kinda reinvent the wheel, if you try to go with something totally different or obscure, um. May be fair to say that if you gave somebody an average cola, um, over an eight-year period, you know, say one percent cola for cost of living and adjustment, I mean, it'd be less than, well, in some instances, it'd be less than five, five hundred. Some instances, it'd be more.
'Cause their state hasn't given a cola.
Right, I mean, that's, so if your salary's forty thousand, you're gonna get four hundred bucks, if it's one percent, if your salary's seventy thousand, you're gonna get seven hundred bucks. Just looking at a one percent cola over every year, but, I mean, that's not to say that the five hundred isn't accurate too. The lower end people probably.
The five hundred's where we did the chart stat, I think, was where we got the.
That was the chart.
Yeah, that was the chart, and Matt started, he's jumped around, like depending on what year you were, how much it was, but.
And the rest of the counties all fine. And the rest of the counties all fine.
Let's talk about a few of the other things we have, and we'll come back, once you guys move through some of that, because we have other things to.
No.
Yeah, I said I was here till like seven fifteen, but I got peeled potatoes at like five o'clock, so.
Yeah, I'm leaving at three forty-five on the bar.
Hold on, let me text them and see if they got enough people, because I might be able to get out of there.
You say the bar, are you talking about somewhere, or you talking about Sam's office?
Uh, no.
The Missouri bar down the street, yeah, we, now, we.
Hey, you know what?
He's, he's a good Lutheran, he doesn't drink.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna open a bar.
I didn't sound drinking, I just sounded like a bar.
I'm gonna call it Jared's, that way you can tell your wife you're going to Jared's, and she'll be like, oh.
I talked to Larry Vins this morning, they don't think Eugene Water's gonna be done before the end of the year, so we will have a budget to add for Eugene Water for at least a little while in twenty nineteen, they're supposed to be working on it, so I can get it in the system. If you wanna turn to page one eleven, sales tax, that's the list of capital requests, I did tell you this morning, I did not receive one from the recorder, I don't know if it went to Brian or not, these were the ones that, since I do me, we did have two people request additional items when they came in to talk about their budget, one was Bill Farr and painting, the other was the health department and a copier.
Damn, it's hot in here.
Yeah, it is, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna strip down to my skivvies.
Please don't.
I was wondering if you had.
I got my sleeves rolled up, I got my collar unbuttoned, it's like.
All right, well, we good?
Well, capital, we can look at.
Which one are we on?
Page, would you say one?
One eleven.
But you rattled off about four different things, which one are we gonna talk about first?
First, and update the amount of money, so now, basically, how much do you wanna keep in contingency, how much do you want to approve, which projects?
Kit Kat?
Are you going straight through, or you all gonna take it through?
They cannot take.
We're going straight through.
We're going straight through.
All right, I'll talk to y'all later. Okay, thanks, sir.
Sorry, we gotta do that.
I thought this was Kit Kat.
I don't see anything on this list that's pressing, um, I mean, obviously, even with computerization, we don't even know if all that's in there, and we don't know if the recorder's requests are in that two twenty-five.
The two twenty-five was what got submitted to me, I did not change it, so.
Right, but is there recorder stuff in there, we don't know.
Not when I looked at the list, I had it open out there.
I mean, I.
I mean, even if it was, it included in Brian's list, her priorities and things that she wants to do may be different than, I mean, so, I don't.
I mean, there's, there's no way that the IT move's gonna cost nine thousand dollars.
That was way before we were talking about, that was an estimate from CenturyLink at the time.
Right. Right, I mean, probably add ten, multiply the times ten.
Here's his equipment, yes?
Oh, yeah.
Here's his new equipment list, and I didn't see anything marked recorder, so I'm gonna have to say nothing, oh, wait, scanner. I don't know what these things are.
So, normally, what we do is we come up, kinda like we talked about with other departments, come up with an amount that you want in capital improvements, and what can we knock off the list during the year that we want to knock off, so, if you wanna go through individually and decide, hey, I want to go ahead and move forward and bid these items, or say yes, like, Donnell had some that she needed to purchase in January, do you want to tell her to move forward or not, but do you want there to be more than one point five in that line, less?
What's, what's the total amount? Where's the? What's, what's the total that we have in there now?
Page one thirteen is the sales tax budget, it changed slightly because of the total nine seven.
Ooh, we got twelve thousand more?
We got two thousand.
Two thousand.
We're on bridge together.
Oh, yeah, they get everything.
So, we're gonna bring in nine fifty-eight, we got one point five cash forward.
So, I left seven hundred fifty thousand in contingency.
I'm good with that number.
Do you wanna prove any of these things now or not?
So, nine fifty-eight. And you left seven fifty in there?
I left seven fifty, fifty in contingency.
But everything goes through us anyway, so.
That's right.
Yeah, the only one that will be pressing now, you've already approved some of these, like, that isn't coming out of there anymore.
We need to know where the reverse nine-one-one is coming out of, because I have that contract to sign, if I can't sign it, tell you, tell me where, and I'll take it for it. But it's not coming out of here.
Matt's not here, take it out EMS.
That's where it's at, it's.
Yeah, it probably needs to be.
Not his enterprise, but it's Sam's.
I was kinda kidding, but now, think about it.
It's EMS and sheriff are gonna be.
Donna'll be right back.
Well, nobody did, I mean, EMS and sheriff for the.
From what I understood, I'm not sure if the sheriff's using it other than for backup system.
You're talking about the rave thing, right?
No, it's the reverse nine-one-one, okay.
Oh, what are we talking about? Reverse nine-one-one?
Bill Farr's reverse nine-one-one, the rave alert thing that we proved the other day?
Yeah, he was the first news story on channel thirteen this morning. Wasn't much news.
Well, I'm here to tell you that, uh, EMS fund can't take a whole lot more stuff, so, I mean, unless we're willing to take all nine-one-one out of the sheriff's budget, you know, um, we just can't keep tacking stuff on EMS, I mean, with two million dollar subsidy, it can't take it anymore.
So, you're saying that the calls that they answer down at the PD and directly transfer to EMS, we don't think we should charge EMS for it all, it should all be the sheriff?
Yeah. They don't dis, they don't dispatch for EMS, they just transfer the call.
Oh, but they take the call and they dispatch the ambulance if it's in, if it's in Jeff City.
No, they don't. No, they don't. They don't dispatch any of our ambulances.
The fire department, no, I mean, they, they send the first responder.
No, they don't. They don't dispatch anything. I mean, they dispatch for the fire department and rural.
Yeah.
He's saying the city and the fire department first, so.
Yeah, they are, and then, then we're, we can.
They're dispatching the fire department, Jeff City Fire Department.
Yeah.
That's not our EMS.
No, no.
They dispatch fire, police department, sheriff's department. And then rural fire. They just transfer call EMS, so.
I think we do pay the first responders out of there, yeah.
I think so, the nine-one-one system still needs to come out EMS fund, but, I don't, I think you're saying if we're gonna start taking other stuff from them, then we could, that'd be one place we could eliminate or whatever, but I think we still need to take nine-one-one out of there, that portion of it, so. But the rave thing, I was just kidding, because Matt wasn't here, we hadn't picked on him, so.
That's just where we had it in the eighteen budget, because when we talked about it, we talked about it being an extension of nine-one-one, because they would have access to the information, like, when they got dispatched, so.
Okay, so that's what we're doing this year, so take it out of there, we had it in eighteen budget, right?
Yes.
We're not even talking about nineteen, this has nothing to do with the nineteen budget.
So, you want to take the eighteenth amount out of six fifty sales tax?
Wherever y'all had it budgeted is what I've taken out of, it's there. And then we'll vote on next year's, if we're gonna renew it, I'll probably still know, but.
Well, I'll take a look at that within six months, because otherwise, it automatically renews.
Well, then I don't even get to vote. Okay, we got that on the calendar, can you put that on agenda for, like, uh, May?
Okay.
We need to do that, we need to go look at all our contracts that are like that.
But all I'm saying is that, yeah, they may utilize that service, and I, I think that possibly they should pay some of that, but, you know, and I was one of the first ones to say that they should pay the rent too, out there, and then they paid their portion of the rent, now they paying rent for all of ESP, um, for the whole Southridge property, so. We just, I mean, at some point, we gotta take a look at how much we're gonna charge them.
They're not paying for the whole thing, are they?
Yeah.
When did that happen?
Last year in the budget.
Out of this.
Out of the sales tax comes a portion, and out of the enterprise comes a portion.
So, for emergency services for Bill Farr's part, they're paying for his?
Out of the sales tax.
The sales tax is.
I don't care where it's coming from, but it's coming from EMS fund?
It's the EMS sales tax versus the enterprise, I mean, we, it all comes into the sales tax, and we help the operations of the enterprise fund from that, but it's called an emergency.
Circuits and sales tax.
Yeah, it's not just like an ambulance thing.
Because I thought the grants to pay for that stuff, and that's where his portion came from.
No, he's spending way more than what that grant is covering.
He may turn it in, but again, he's already capped out of what the cap is before that even happens.
Okay, we can talk about that later too, I didn't realize that we took that all out.
Well, we can't keep putting stuff up all off, and I'll talk about it later.
Eventually, we gotta talk about these things.
What do we need to have decided today? I, I got all day.
You gotta peel potatoes.
Hey, they don't understand if their tax money's at work. They don't, you don't want my blood in your potatoes tomorrow night anyway. I get kinda crazy with knives.
So, let's, let's finish sales tax first, and then we'll go back to EMS, and then look at some of the things that are in there.
I'm fine with this number two, because we've got complete control over that anyway, what stuff do we need to tell people they can go ahead and do?
The only thing I really need an answer on is, um, circuits, I think.
Is what?
Circuits, uh, sound recording machine, and the rest of the stuff we can bring to.
The FTR machines and the software license amounts, those are the two things she said she needed to have in place in January, so they can change those machines out.
And what about the computers?
The computers was from this year still.
Okay, so that's gonna get scratched off?
Yes.
But it's gonna come out of our cash forward, or?
If we're. We got an invoice for it. I haven't got an invoice, I think there's a question about that.
We continue, we just keep funding state stuff over here, and it, I mean, at some point, it's gotta stop. I mean, computers, FTR machine, software, a person, a person to scan stuff, and microfilm stuff, I mean. It's never in.
I don't know how our comparisons do for what we budget for courts versus any other county.
I'm sure ours is high, because we have the state right here.
We are.
Well, I mean.
Being a capital city.
I don't know, in Boone County, it's, there's a lot of services that their courts provide that are county funded, so it.
I know it's different.
Yeah, it's different, so, I don't know that there's a comparison that, that you can look at to say, you know, we fund this percentage of their whatever, right, I don't think so.
So, she's already ordered the computers, it's just a matter of whether we're gonna get an invoice this year and pay it out of this year?
They're already in and installed.
So, we're gonna pay that regardless?
Uh, sure, they're already paid for, so.
They've already been paid for, or?
We don't have, it's the impression I got. We, we agreed to pay for a certain number, like the.
Okay, so that one's already done, yeah, it's already done, we can't do nothing about that one, so it's.
There's nothing additional, you already approved that, if it.
Well, and, and looking at this one point five, and that includes that computerization, or, in the budget, it does not, so, in the budget, it's one point five, plus the two twenty-five for computerization, so, you have some wiggle room there, if something comes up, something else you want to do, or, uh, the other one probably that you need to think about pretty quickly is the health department's copier, that their lease runs out in March, I think she said, so. That's another one you need to think about possibly, whether or not you wanna move forward fairly.
We had like three copiers, didn't we, from different departments, can we, can we bid them all and?
We already, already bought them.
Oh, we already bought them.
I was gonna say, most of the time, so there's multiple ones on state contracts, so it's picking the options or the things that you want, staying on the same capital, we have. Anything else with the year portion of sales tax?
I just say leave the number there, and we'll, we'll decide after the first year what, what we're gonna approve.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, road and bridges, sales tax, a, a lot of theirs is gonna be plugging in final numbers, what you're seeing in front of you was everything that was open when we presented the budget, so, any open PO plus new projects for twenty nineteen?
Where are we at?
Uh, page one fourteen.
Next page.
Well, yeah, one fourteen, one fifteen.
Oh. Okay.
So, there, eight oh three, it should close out, it got transferred to eight oh five, and on page one fifteen is theirs, so it's.
So, all that stuff got moved to eight oh five, then?
Well, there was a very small amount left, they spent most of it down, so.
And they're pretty good at coming to you guys with these particular roads and stuff that they have going on, and POs will transfer, I.
So, was it this six hundred and twelve thousand that transferred, or what, what's the number that you were, out of eight oh three?
Uh, no, the six hundred and twelve's what we spent, and we brought in, the eight twenty-five was the original cash forward, so they had about two hundred thousand that we finally just moved to, to the new one and combined it all together.
Two twelve.
Where did that come in at?
Uh, you don't see it, it just, it just got, well, so like, the carry forward included it.
It carried forward.
Okay, the, the cash forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, it's not listed as a transfer, it's just the cash forward got combined into one department. But I can tell you that, I think that two hundred that was in there, it's for the railroads for. It was the one project that didn't get, right, didn't move forward. So, if you look at the departments requested, that's mainly the new projects, if you look at mine, I include both the open projects and the new, so, like, any open PO I included into my.
Yeah, we spent a lot on stormwater.
So you said their number was the number requested and your number was the one?
Their department requested is only the new projects they're proposing.
Okay.
Mine includes both the open projects and the new. Like any open PO I included into my budget, so we do a total dollar.
So they had three seventy five under bridge construction and then you got two thousand?
So when they submitted, I don't have like their Southbrook space three and their Montotop Creek Bridge Road, I didn't have those projects in there, so they had them up in the main line until we create the project lines in here.
Okay.
So I've included their total three seventy five, it's just down in other places. The only time I'll cut a project out is if their budget doesn't come out balanced or something comes in higher when they bid it, we gotta move from one to the other.
Gotta get that Montotop, Montotop Creek Road Bridge to the city to put down on Adrian's Island. It's, it's a neat little bridge.
Good.
Yes, yes.
Si, senor, Rita. Rita, as seen Rita, senora.
You wanna go back to EMS sales tax?
Go back to what?
That rent that you just talked about long ago, do you wanna look at that?
I'm trying to remember the discussion we had last year to move it all to.
So.
That fund.
Where does that, where does the rent coming from that go? Does that go to GR?
Yes.
So. So we're paying ourselves rent, is what it amounts to.
Right, cause we.
But that, is that the only way we can take some money out of EMS fund? Which I mean, I think some of it needs to come out of that fund to pay for the building, so it's essentially making a payment.
Right.
So when the building's out of public works? If we build something out there later on, a wash station and stuff? We're gonna basically have them paying us rent to make that payment too? And that one's easier, cause that's a hundred percent them, but this one's not a hundred percent EMS. Hell, it's at most fifty.
Well, right, cause the rollback.
But I meant, at most fifty percent of it's coming from the ambulance using that part of it. Built that one side, and all of them stored at trucks.
So obviously, all that, I mean, could be considered emergency services, I mean.
Right, right. That's what we discussed last year was.
So.
EMS's portion comes out of their enterprise fund to general fund, and Bill Fars portion comes out of emergency medical services sales tax to the general fund.
I mean, I thought when we first did that a few years ago, was that who bought the building? And so GR bought the building, or Capital or whatever, and so, you know, why should, why should Capital Outlay put all the money out and never recoup the cost of the building when it's basically being used by EMS and they have dedicated funding, so. It makes sense that they would help pay for part of that building.
And their enterprise fund versus general obligation as road bridges? Make that argument too. I guess that's just the enterprise fund.
Well, it's no different than us paying rent to the fire departments to house an ambulance there, EMS is paying to house their ambulances in our building. Bill Fars is a little more money, I mean.
Yeah, and I wouldn't think of it that way. I was thinking we had it separately and we had more grants and stuff coming from emergency services. Cause we've got a load of space taken up over there just with stuff sitting there for emergencies. So, the MEOC is out there and about.
Right, and I mean, you know, we did-
Four times as much space.
We did a roof out there, I mean, we've, we've done a lot of other repairs out there too, to, you know, we had to repaint that roof and do some stuff out there too, so I mean, it's, it's a cost and.
But I mean, if we do stuff out there for public works, which I mean, that's gonna happen at some point.
It depends what you use that new part for. If you're using it for planning and parks and stuff, yeah, that's ours responsibility. It's not that fund's responsibility. Depends what you use it for.
I mean, so I think the big question is, is that, obviously, if you start moving stuff around, you're gonna start affecting GR quite a bit.
Yes.
So if we add an HR person or do some of that, we're gonna affect GR.
Yes.
And so. And so right now, you said, well, you said when you presented that, that GR was balanced.
It was.
With the adjustments to the salary in there that you proposed?
Yes.
So if we change that, then it could make some difference, but not a huge amount.
And what you do with it.
Yeah, if you take the total and divide it out, or, yeah, or if you just reduce it.
So really, at this point, you need to think about the salary stuff and decide where you wanna be, because we have a few additional people and things that we probably need to talk about, but we probably should decide what you're doing for the current employees before you start talking about adding more.
I'm a no on additional people. If you wanna put something in there as a placeholder for HR, and we can talk about that.
So do you wanna take the one in IT out, that the sheriffs help me fund?
I don't really wanna take any of them out. I mean, Judy made good arguments this morning too about Nina, but I think we need to wait, let's get in there and see what happens. I forgot about ITs too.
Then you have the two full-time and juvenile, but it's made up for part-time, so it balances itself out.
That's a, that's a wash though.
I was fine with that too, because we're not adding any employees there, and it's zero difference in, in the budget.
Part-time and assessor? That's not really hard to GR.
Part-time for the transfer or for getting the information in there.
And I think we're gonna have to do that. I think, I don't think there's any way you can get around it.
Now, you wanna do one for the other of this?
Those are temporary there.
Yeah.
Well, if we, I guess if you're all a hard no on all of them, we can. The only one that's in there, I mean, the juvenile one is in there, but again, it has no budgetary effect, so if you don't wanna do the full-time person, it's gotta go back into part-time. And the one for Brian is in there, but if you wanna take it out, we need to take it out. But we also are taking out the transfer from law enforcement to help pay for it.
So I'd do the two with Michael, and I'd do the, the one for Brian, and we're gonna need the two part-time for, to get the dev net up.
Well, assessor's not in general, so there is that.
But if we can, if you guys wanna make those decisions right now, we can move forward with those.
Assessor one, I want, you know, contingent upon the dev net thing going through.
Yeah.
The IT one, I think we can survive. I know the move to the health department was a load. Could you use somebody? Yeah, probably. Can people wait a little bit longer? Definitely. So I don't know if we need to hire another spot there. What was the other ones?
Well, the, I guess you guys are okay with juvenile, that's what I'm saying.
Fringers, good, yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't really adding anybody.
Part-time and assessor's good, I think we're all agreed upon that.
Did we have a dollar amount?
Yeah, forty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, I could've, yeah, okay.
Thousand hours, three M thousand hours at fifteen dollars.
Sorry, Sam. IS?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I mean, Kirsten had it in the budget, so I'm, I'm good with IT.
So then the only other one that we discussed is the recorder.
I'd kinda wait till Judy gets in there and gets, that's kinda like when Joe was coming to talk to me about public administrator, although he didn't know anything about that, where Judy does know about this, but I think still, she's, you know, after she's been there for a while.
I think she knows she can approach you guys.
Yeah, yeah, I'd.
I'm a, I'm a no on recorder out of GR.
Um, if she wants to do an MOU for part-time or something, are you still open to that?
Yeah, I'll entertain that.
Yeah, I don't think she said the part-time will work though, cause she needs, somebody knows what they're doing and stuff. That's what I took from her.
So I'll throw it out there, what if she wants to pay for a full-time person out of her, but are you open to that?
Hell, I think she threw that out there, didn't she?
Yeah.
Well, if we, if we did the thirty thousand on reviving.
If we paid some of that cap, yes, she was more than willing to think of it.
Man, I'm, I'm open to that discussion again, so. But I, I'd like to know where her, what her IT requests are gonna be too. If they're not in there somewhere.
She wants to go get those old machines out of.
So, did you guys have changes you wanted to make to EMS sales tax?
As far as the rent, you mean, or anything?
Or the I-111 or any of that?
We kinda decided yesterday on the capital.
Yeah, I thought we were good with the, the number in capital.
Yeah, it was eight seventy-five.
And these two are already in commerce?
We need to go to his enterprise fund real fast.
So, in other words, you might wanna communicate with him that he needs to talk to you guys before any of his vehicles or anything like that?
So what are we talking about, on the reverse timeline, I wonder, are we talking about fifty-five hundred dollars each?
Right now, the whole level's in there.
Right, I mean, we're talking about splitting it, sheriff and EMS, right?
I don't know with the.
I'm not, I'm just asking, it was eleven thousand dollars, right?
Eleven the first year and then ten each additional area.
I don't think anybody's approached the sheriff about that.
I mean, did you wanna have a conversation about nine-one-one in general?
Well, I think conversation needs to be had at some point, but, I mean.
So you want the split to be different, or you don't think EMS should be paying anyone?
I think there's warrants of conversation to see what, what's being serviced by what.
Cause that could have a pretty substantial effect on both of those budgets. Can I switch, switch gears on you real fast, go to EMS interface? So go to tree. So he wants to change the PWW documentation course to seventeen thousand. Reduce the HNTW pediatric insurance streaming by fifteen hundred. And then go to organization and add the triple A for three thousand. We are having to add anyone, so it's triple A cost data. Nope, AAAA. Cost data program, just cost data. And then three thousand.
Is that me?
Yeah. So that put, that was the two things he had on there, sent no to the flow.
I mean, I don't even wanna bring this up, but I'm gonna. We haven't even really talked about pre-trial, and, uh, anyway, there's probably gonna be some recommendations for some changes and stuff there. It's been a successful program, but we have to wait on doing anything there, but we got some good people running that program over there, but they're gonna be retiring out in the near future, and so we're gonna need to get some other people in there to, to train and operate and learn how to run that. So. Anyway. My thoughts on that is I'd like to see the law, law enforcement fund pay for more of that program. So I know, talked to John, he was comfortable with the fifty thousand number there, but, uh, anyway, I think it should be more.
I think we need to be bringing in more revenue. You've been more involved with it than I have, and y'all have been meeting on this stuff, but if you're gonna give me the opportunity to wear a shackle, keep my job, be with my family, I shouldn't be footing the bill, even though it is saving us money, we've, we've had that argument before. But this should be worth something, something to me, to not be sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I don't know how many of them can afford it either, or how many of them have jobs, so I'll make that argument.
Right, and so, you know, the flip side of that is, is that they could sit in jail, and they could sit in jail for a long time and not be out and could be costing us forty or forty-five dollars a day, or we can spend the ten, ten dollars a day, and that's, that's only for the certain ones that are actually on a leg shackle, cause I mean, when they talk about monitoring, it's not just, everybody's on a leg shackle. I mean, there's certain people that are only let out on a leg shackle, and they haven't even gone to court yet, so they're being monitored versus, so they may not even get convicted. So. Anyway, and then there's others that they just, they just monitor and they make them check in with them and different things, and so, I mean, but the, the, there's obviously a cost to doing that too, because we have to have people there to, to make those phone calls and do those types of things and.
I'd, I'd set it up to where, you know, if they end up doing some time and we're gonna get reimbursed by the state, they don't have to pay. Maybe if they're found not guilty, they don't have to pay.
That's that new law that we went, we went to the, down the Mac, and it's, I think they'll pay up to twelve fifty a day.
So the only thing to remember about that, that's only if they go.
It does have to get.
If they're gonna, yeah, if they go to prison.
So we're in the same boat.
And it's all coming out of the same pot as what we're getting now, but, um, it's still more than what we had.
Well, they just, I mean, so, so my argument would be is we're saving money by not having them sit in jail, we're able to backfill with the federal prisoners, and that's taking the law enforcement front from being in the red to being heavily in the black.
Yeah, I think what Richard said, the leg shackles, rough, four fifty a day or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not, of course, that's not counting, you got, got a monitoring, but that's a hell of a lot cheaper than having them sit in jail. And it really is, it's about ten- And it really is, it's about ten per, about ten percent of the cost if they were in jail.
Right. But you got, gotta realize too, that everybody that gets arrested usually has the opportunity to post bond. If you can't afford to post bond, now you're either left to sit in jail, or we can get you out on pre-trial release. So, it's, it's really the people that can post the bail, and so, if a prosecutor's overcharging, you know, you have no recourse for that. If the charge is appropriate to the offense, you know, maybe your bond is less, or whatever it may be. So, you know, there, there could be, well, hell, there's a guy that's out on, people post bond all the time that are accused of murder. So, I mean, not necessarily a person that you want out on the street, but I mean, what, if the evidence isn't there that he actually did it, I mean, just cause he's been accused of it.
What about the court stuff, we had that hundred fifty in there, should it be another fifty, should it not be another fifty?
We did not get to grant, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, you found out?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
I thought it would be in the newspaper by now, but I didn't see anything yet.
I don't, I didn't think there was any commitment.
The only commitment we had was the one fifty if Jeff City and Callaway County both went in. Callaway County said, we're not in if the grant does not, we do not receive the grant, so I don't think that.
That we're committed?
We're committed. Here that, we can go back in and amend the.
So, right now, I can take that hundred fifty out of not encumber it?
I'm not saying necessarily that, we're not going to do it, I'm just saying.
We're not, we're not in for a hundred and fifty, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it was seventy-five if we got the grant, one fifty if we didn't get the grant.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, Callaway was gonna pay thirty-seven fifty, we were paying seventy-five thousand.
They said they were fine with the fourth part of it, the grant, but not if it didn't pass.
And Callaway County was paying thirty-seven thousand.
So, we encumbered the one fifty thinking worst-case scenario, we were in it for one fifty.
That was before we knew what Callaway County had voted.
Before that, before the grant, which is.
They were back to square one right now, I.
I think it's gonna take a lot of stepping back and looking at it, it's, I think, I don't think anybody's ever talked to the Corps of Engineers about it, but I understand there's some issues down there that, we need to find out if there, you know, there might be some kind of three-toed sloth or something in that creek, we need to watch out for some salamander or something too, so.
We really don't have a commitment, and I would get that PO out of there. But it's up to you.
But, okay, so, just worst-case scenario, if Chamber says, hey, I want your one fifty, we got someone else to kick in, Callaway's portion, are we in for one fifty?
I didn't agree to that.
I think we'd have to renegotiate.
I said if Callaway's in and Jefferson City was.
We have our, we have the partners meeting in January, I think.
So, what if we pull that agreement up, though?
I mean, there's a Port Authority Board meeting in, in January.
In January.
Yeah, so.
So, I think we'll know a lot more after that, but.
I mean, so you're saying if, if two of the partners are in and the third is out, I don't think, that's not a very fair deal, and it was, and it wasn't an even split either.
No, but then they could get the money from somewhere else, maybe it's not Callaway County, maybe it's ABC Industries says, hey, we'll, we'll chip in that amount and come up.
Read that to us, Kristen.
You what that?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, do it to her. Keep moving it around, there you go. Now, try to read it while she's changing it.
This one you want?
Small, big.
Go next.
I think that's just the, is that the articles of a corporation?
Yeah, yes, I want, I want the end.
Oh, you want the end of it?
Go ahead. Whole pork's coming back on me.
There's the agreement.
See, when you get some Lysol. Gulf County, Callaway County, City of Jefferson, very, very bottom.
So, and.
Right.
Did we not actually sign an agreement?
No. We did not, cause I kept asking Joe for the agreement, she said they hadn't worked out the stuff yet.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't remember that, I think.
There are fif, page fifteen on that.
More, more, we didn't sign anything.
Yeah, I don't remember if we signed an agreement, I mean, I know that.
You voted no on whether we were agreeing on.
Yeah, make sure you point that out, Jim, just cause you guys threw all that into one motion.
Well, we could change it.
I don't know.
And did it like Callaway did too, so.
The cost, if the grant is successful, cost if the grant is not successful, but have we already incurred some of those costs?
No.
The survey and topographical survey.
No.
Well, we, the only cost we incurred was a feasibility study.
Yes, we had a contract for that, for forty-seven thousand.
So, this was totally separate, and we agreed to both, both terms, but, Callaway only agreed to the portion that the grant was successful.
I don't know that you're out of your off, but I guess we could go back and look and see your actual motion.
Two of doors going forward with, but I don't, because I thought it was odd at the time too, as no reason I remember it, so I was like, what is that?
Okay, so if you go look at the application, and it's, it's submitted with those numbers, that's what we agreed to support was the application, but it did not have Callaway County voting to endorse it.
This one might say.
What's that, joint resolution?
Yeah, it's really not.
So, basically, if, if the city and both counties approve the application, and funding the required match, which we did, they move forward with the grant application. Then. If it, if the grant was not successful, then the full three seventy-five, which would be us hundred fifty, City one fifty, and Callaway seventy-five, but they don't have the Callaway seventy-five, so. That's where, I don't feel like, we're inclined to have to do that until we know what the next step is gonna be.
I mean, in my opinion, if we didn't sign the contract, we're not obligated. It's just me, I mean, there may be other things that may come back out of that, but.
Yeah, I think.
If we would, let's sign an agreement somehow, the next step.
I think that January meeting.
Hey, see, this is our out.
Where was the auditor at when all that was going on?
Hello.
I think the January meeting.
Yeah, where were you?
Hopefully.
So, take that one fifty back out.
Where was that at?
In one twenty-seven, how in, for minimum twenty-seven?
General.
So, here's my car bet, you still got money left over.
Nope, we don't, we're a hundred sixty-one in the hole.
Sorry, Sam, we still know on that one.
So, what's left in economic development?
Oh, yeah.
What's left, what did we have budgeted in economic development?
The hundred and twenty for the new agreement.
Right.
You had.
Five for.
Five for salute, you had. I think there's a thousand for Tasty Joe City and twenty-five thousand dollar cushion.
Yeah, cause I think the bicentennial committee is gonna.
There, so twenty-five missing is a thousand Tasty Joe City.
Maybe we need to put more money in there.
Five thousand for salute, the forty-two hundred.
We're gonna do something next year.
Yeah.
Forty-two hundred is no remaining on the.
HR. HR. I just think there should be more in there, I mean, there may be other things that we need to do within that item, but.
Everything you're adding, this points in the hole.
Thought you just took a hundred fifty out of GR there.
And you were a hundred and sixty-one in the hole? So, if that hundred and fifty got you to eleven in the hole.
Yeah.
Round one up to forty, fifty, one every one. We were at two, what were the last two?
I think we're close to two hundred or something. Two twenty?
And seventeen. Jump to three here, here.
You have the worst highlighting colors, the orange and red, and then the green. No, I didn't say you put them in there, I just said you have the worst colors, orange and red.
What do you think, any more, forty, fifty?
Yeah.
I mean, I just think that there could be things that we might need to do with, maybe economic development people or bicentennial.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Can I draw or not, Jeff?
Where's it gonna come from? I thought you said we was eleven in the hole.
We hope for Carrie Ford to be high.
That's still in the hole, that doesn't count.
Come on.
Still budgeting.
No, because I'm gonna, we're gonna come back if the Carrie Ford's not where it's supposed to, cause something's gotta go.
What do you think about that?
So, if Carrie Ford comes in last, then she thought it might, then we gotta have a balanced budget, so I'm gonna take it from somewhere, or fix contingency. Change contingency, right?
We, we may have some discussions that be added, cash comes in way under, especially EMS.
But if you make this twenty-five, then you're gonna take it from contingency.
Basically, at this point.
If you make it more than twenty-five, yeah.
Oh, more than twenty-five?
The twenty-five was in there.
Okay.
So, we can always come back for, if something special does come up.
So, leave it.
Yeah, you have complete control, I mean, you transfer in.
Yeah, I know, I know, you know, we were talking Boone County and Callaway County.
Well, part of the reason it was so much higher before was that forty-seven thousand for the board thing was in there.
Right, but it seemed like even before that, we'd still had around two hundred thousand dollars in there for economic development, it seemed like that was a placeholder.
We did.
Yep.
Cause we had hundred.
It was a hundred sixty for the chamber.
Fifty for the chamber, and then we had different groups that we were giving the money to was always in there.
Yeah, ten thousand to.
Yeah.
As those agreements went away, we kind of took that out of there.
So, I guess that's the question, is do we wanna leave that in there for other things that, Chris, it's all about possibly coming up. I don't know if you got anything necessarily in mind, I know you said the bicentennial, we probably oughta try to build something up for that, but, I mean, we can do fundraising for that too. I don't know what exactly y'all got in mind, what's your budget?
We do have that twenty-five thousand for Miss Link, is it whether you think you can board with that?
Right. Let, let's just leave it at this time, and if we need to revisit that, we can figure out where we're gonna get it.
Let's look at.
I mean, so, we just took a hundred and fifty out, so we were a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the hole.
Yeah.
Hundred and sixty-one, so.
Locke gave us some updated salary stuff for his survey. He would like to continue to do an MOU, but it's gonna be to pay for a part-time attorney. But he's going to eliminate a full-time attorney position and the part-time investigative position that were in there before. He wants to change salaries from around a little bit, but we kind of talked through that yesterday. If you don't go with my plan, that's kind of where those salaries came from, so we probably need to talk some more.
Okay, so what's bottom line, and he's, this is your recommendations, and he was okay with it?
Uh, it, it's a combination of both.
Yeah. He's making some adjustments, adding a title, what a lead prosecutor or something.
First assistant prosecutor.
Yeah, first assistant, and he's gonna pay quite a bit more, but ultimately, he's gonna save us twenty-three thousand dollars, wouldn't.
I think so, yes.
We need to take the revenue down, or it should be the.
Should I change this, or change the name from that investigator to MOU? Should I change that to thirty?
So, I mean, I was here when he was here.
Three six fifty, I think.
Seemed like he had a good plan.
But, so that part shouldn't really change.
Okay, I just named a different one.
Yeah, but his. And then his salary line, let's just change and see what it looks like, so his salary line would go to, what is the total, I don't have it in. Eight sixty-two, two seventeen.
This one up here.
That has the cell phone stipend in it. Take the forty-three twenty off of. Eight sixty-two, two sixteen, or two seventeen, I'm sorry.
So, the adjustments are.
What is forty-three twenty?
So, I include that?
Yeah, you have to take the other two out, I don't have it, well, I do have a broken down, so the twelve's still the same.
Okay.
The eighty-eight forty's still the same, so you need to subtract those two off of that number. Twelve thousand eleven. And eight thousand eight forty. Thirty-seven forty-six.
It's a big cut.
Eight, thirty-seven, go forty-six. Eight sixty-two, two seventeen, that's right, and then we need to reduce that reimbursement personnel service. Probably leave the thirty-five in there, take the other one out, and it's not gonna be an investigator, it's gonna be a VA. We'll have to adjust benefits yet, so I don't have that information printed, so the.
I mean, now.
Loggers and social security go down and cert go down, and that'll eliminate one health insurance.
Got any questions there?
Well, you said you're saving us money in the salary line, is what you're.
Yeah.
So, after we're adding the COLA to it, and the adjustments, are still gonna be a savings?
Yeah.
Did we eliminate a position, or were?
Yeah, we did.
He's, he's eliminating a full-time prosecutor, hiring a part-time prosecutor, eliminating a full-time investigator.
Part-time.
Part-time prosecutor.
Yeah.
Let's see where they got that minus.
Yeah.
So, do we need to change that if it's special one, or did you separate that anyway?
It is separated, it is two.
Seven hundred two.
Well. I don't see anything that jumps out at me as a mess with it. So, I, I think I was just trying to follow where the savings were at, and I see where it's zeroed there in the last column, so, just took me a minute.
Just change that.
A little slow today.
It is afternoon, it is afternoon, sitting there on full.
I had HBA Christmas party last night too, so.
You had all kinds of parties this weekend.
Oh, this time of year, it's terrible.
Yeah, you had a good week.
My liver's pickled right now. We got football nights, you're gonna have to have a couple.
Right, well, you're peeling potatoes, I mean, that makes it kind of difficult.
I mean, I might start early. Good thing is I'll finish early, we got the Renegades coffee tomorrow, I gotta be Friday.
All right, so, one.
All right, so one thing that we have not talked about at all is the sheriff and N D M S have talked about holiday pay and vacation rates.
So we can't be the only ones that have this. Why is this all of a sudden coming up to be an issue, I guess?
Well, so right now, right now, you earn so many hours of holiday during the, eight hours time, is it twelve or fourteen?
Depends how long you've been here on vacation.
No, holidays.
No, holidays.
Oh, holidays, eight hours times, a one year is forty, so you go up to ninety-six.
Talk about holidays. So ninety-six hours, everyone's being paid for ninety-six hours, whether you take it on the holiday, or you take that day on a different day, you get ninety-six hours of holiday pay. Now, for some departments, yes, it takes more to take a day off, but the total number of hours that you get paid for a holiday is your salary hourly amount times ninety-six. It's included in your salary for the year. If you would change it, and say you wanted to pay them on the holiday for the holiday, whether you work or you don't work, it will cost us more money, because you will pay the people that are scheduled to work that day, or if they're scheduled day off already, an extra twelve days, or ninety-six hours.
And I just wanna clarify, the only two departments that get holiday earned is the sheriff and N D M S. Juvenile kinda taking income, whoever worked on it. So they don't have holiday, I mean.
I think they do. I think they do.
Okay, okay, a few men, juvenile.
So.
The rest of us just taking.
I talked to Debbie a little bit about this earlier, and I'm not saying I'm leaning one way or the other, but for certain departments, you know, if you don't get scheduled to work the holiday, that's, that's good for you. Your schedule may have you work other days, but, so you got the holiday off, that wasn't a regular day that you were supposed to work. Now, people that get scheduled to work on a holiday, I think they should be paid to work the holiday, whatever that is. But if you're
But are you getting paid for eight hours, or are you getting paid however many hours you work?
Currently, but
So, just in that, in that scenario, you would get paid for the shift that you worked starting on the holiday, double time. But if you weren't scheduled on the holiday, great for you, but you don't get a holiday pay.
I think that's kinda the way I see it too, that if you work on Christmas, you don't just get to take eight hours some other time, you're gonna get paid for that. And you're gonna get time and a half or double time.
Right. So if you're, if you, if you're a regularly scheduled person, and you work Monday through Friday, eight hours a day, or whatever that is, you know, and your department's closed on that day, you get paid for that eight hours or whatever. If for some instance in public works that they get called in, well, they just, they don't get paid for eight hours, they get paid for double time for the hours that they work.
Okay, so let me be, let me be the sheriff's department, they're gonna bring it up, then, you know, I'm not scheduled to work that day. So you're giving everybody else a day off, but just cause I'm not scheduled, like, I'm scheduled to work Tuesday through Friday, and the holiday's on Monday, I'm not getting that holiday that everybody else is getting.
Yeah, you, you got the day off. You got the holiday off. So.
No, you didn't get the holiday.
You did.
No, you do. You didn't work on the holiday, the observed holiday, you got the day off, you didn't get paid.
At my counterpart that works Tuesday through Friday, did get it off, because the holiday fell on Friday. But the holidays that fall on Monday, I'm not scheduled to work, so I don't get none of those holidays, because we got it at juvenile, we got it at the health department, they work four tens, and they switch from Tuesday through Saturday or Sunday, and, and they get that, so they're just S O L.
In that circumstance, so say you were an eight-hour day person, but say you work like a juvenile, I work Tuesday through Saturday. So my two scheduled days off during the week are Sunday and Monday, I really didn't get a holiday, I got my regular two scheduled days off. I did not get a holiday. Just cause my actual day off normally fell on the holiday. So that person is not getting a benefit of a holiday.
They're already off on that holiday, if, if Christmas falls on Saturday or Sunday, you know what?
You get it Friday or Monday.
No, I do not, I'm working those days, in the real world, in the real world. Government's different, so that's why this one's different, so I can't play by those rules, but I'm trying to grasp it all right now, and to find a way that's gonna work the best and it's fair for everybody.
I think what we're doing right now is fair, I mean, I, I mean, right now, everyone's getting ninety-six hours. Whether you get it off ninety-six hours, and you don't have to work, or you get to use that ninety-six on another day, everyone is currently getting the same thing, you're getting ninety-six hours of holiday pay.
So if somebody works on Christmas, what do they get, straight pay?
They get paid for it, plus they can take the time off, but what you guys agreed to the other day was they'll get paid for
But they could get a check for it too. They could say, I want paid for, it's comp time basically, right? Or is it a holiday that's banked?
It's banked.
So they can't get paid for it.
Like Matt Schofield say they did.
Not now, but if you guys agreed to it about the other day, that they will be paid for it, if you want to do that going forward.
They do, but there's just not a forty-hour week.
No.
There's just like a fifty-six hour.
Yeah, it's weird.
So the other thing is, is that you could just pay, you could pay everybody for the week of the holiday for eight, eight hours of holiday pay.
Yes, we can pay that out, I mean, that's what we're gonna do to the twenty-four.
No, nothing banked, but just pay eight hours of holiday.
But in that circumstance, you're still gonna be paying more than you currently pay.
Yes, that comes out of the budget.
Why?
Hmm?
It's twenty hours, first time off.
Right, because right now, you're just, you're, you're offsetting it, I'm taking a different day off, but you're still getting paid for the same number of hours. If I pay you eight hours on every holiday, and I'm paying you an additional ninety-six hours during the year, so instead of being twenty-eighty, you're working ninety-six hours more than that during the year, or you're getting paid for ninety-six hours more.
Right, but we don't, we don't encumber that debt going forward, was, I mean, most people are getting paid for that, and so you say it's more than two thousand and eighty, but it's not, because there's a majority of the people that that holiday's had figured into that two thousand and eighty. Because that forty-hour work week is figures into the two thousand and eighty.
So here, yes, here's the difference, my thirty thousand dollars includes my ninety-six hours of holiday.
Right.
For the person that's either working it or scheduled off, their ninety-six is now going to be an additional ninety-six hours that they're going to get paid for.
So technically, they end up with more.
Right.
Right, and I, I get that, but when we pay people out, when they leave, we have to pay out those things anyway, so.
And that's why we put a limit on it.
You said we, we encumber those debts going forward, right?
So the ol- the only time that's the case though, is if you're, you have holiday banked when you terminate.
Right.
In the circumstance you're talking about, I'm paying each of those employees ninety-six hours every year. So we're gonna have to go through and figure out their salary plus another ninety-six hours of pay, cause right now, it's not in the salary line.
Theirs will be on top, like
Right, it will be additional. So in our spreadsheet, you're almost gonna have a holiday line, it's like a
I mean, you're, you're gonna pay it sooner or later, I mean, if they
Or they're gonna take it.
They're gonna take it.
We may not pay out cash to somebody, they could take the
So they could put it to care leave or whatever.
Or they could physically take off.
Or they physically take off, in that circumstance, you're you have them estimated at twenty-eighty hours, if I take eight hours off and I want it to be paid as holiday, you're still only paying me my twenty-eighty.
And we're paying somebody to come in and fill in your position when you take off, so.
I didn't think I was out of mind when I said you, in the next year, you could take that eight hours sometime, but I seem to think not, and I think in a year, I don't mind.
Sure.
Well, you need to figure that out though, if we're, if that's gonna be our policy that you can carry over, because them getting that now, they're not gonna be able to use it between December twenty-fifth.
I get that, I get that this time.
Do we have a policy to, maybe you can do it if it's after a certain date, but you have to use it by the first quarter?
I don't think you wanna let that open, I think we gotta stand by the policies, you have to use it by the end of the year, because of what we did give on that holiday at the end of the year, we didn't give them the chance to be able to use it, I get that, let's pay them for that, but going forward into the next year, I don't really see any benefits paying the holidays. I mean, I'm sure these two departments were
This really only came up because of the Monday holiday, the Christmas holiday, or Christmas Eve that we don't normally have off, and we were trying to figure it out because it's at the end of the year.
Yeah, Matt, Matt brought it up as far as vacation and stuff too.
Yeah, well, that's Matt. He's just stirring it for us.
I know I might get an extra day off sometime during the year, I'd probably try to use it.
I mean, I, I could say that, uh, you know, if you pay it in, in this year, it could be cheaper than paying it in the next year, it's just gonna cost you more in the future, so.
If they catch on, if they leave here with it.
Right.
Yeah, I, I get that.
I would say probably at least seventy-five percent of the time
They use it.
They use it.
They use it.
Uh, we're not, I don't think that there's that many people that are getting paid out a bank of ninety-six hours of vaca- or holiday when they leave. Now, vacation, yes, but holiday, no.
Do we have a mechanism that they could, uh, if they get to the end of the year, can they be paid for it, and they haven't used it?
Budget-wise, we don't allow, we don't have that built in, I would have to tell them they have to come talk to you guys, because that's not in their budget.
Yeah, that was one of the questions we had about overextension too, is they had banked so much, like during the fair week, or there's so much, and what's our rule for public works, they can only get up to so many hours?
It's the same across the board.
But we can, okay, well.
So two forty for vacation, ninety-six hours for holiday.
So when they bank up comp time and they get over two forty or close to it?
Cops, cops also two forty.
So they can have comp sick and vacation all?
And holidays.
But if they get the comp time over, or they get vacation over, we can make them take that before they take the holiday, that way they lose the holiday, or do they lose all of it if it's over at the end of the year?
If it, if it's over at the end of the year, you lose it.
How does that work for comp time, because if they work it, you have to pay it?
They get paid out.
Well, Roden Bridge is capping it, and they're the only ones really, like, at a certain point, they're paying it anyway.
Right.
They're the only ones that are, would be banking that much.
Okay, so we do pay it if it gets over two forty?
Uh, they, they have to get it paid as overtime in their check when they earn it, not, it's not banked, it's paid out at the end of the year.
Right, if they're at two forty in June, then, you know, they get eight hours of comp time, cause they came in and worked a flood or something, they're gonna get paid, or they have to take a day off that, in that pay period somewhere.
They're getting paid as time and a half. No, they have to get it paid.
Is there an eight?
Their eight-hour work day.
Their eight-hour day, not four.
What?
Theirs is not a forty-hour week, it's an eight-hour day, they earn time and a half after they work eight hours. Which needs to be talked about.
What needs to be talked about?
I don't, I can see if it's a winter storm or something is one thing, but if you can work extra on Monday and Tuesday, and then take off Thursday and Friday, but still get your time and a half for the hours over eight.
That, that can't be, because they work, they go to tens at some point, so you're telling me they're getting time and a half on those two hours?
When they're working tens, it does not, it's not an eight-hour day, it's a forty-hour week.
Okay, so when it snows, we need to have twenty-four hour days. I got discovered.
It would still be a forty-hour week, it would still be a forty-hour week.
Okay, see, that's fine, it's twenty-four hour day, forty hour week.
Right now, it's an eight-hour day. But it's not that way right now, it's an eight-hour day. By our own policy, it is an eight-hour day for them, not a forty-hour week.
Wait before me.
Why?
I did not know that.
Because of the type of seasonal work that they do, they don't know when they're gonna get called in, it used to be just snow, but like she said, it's running over on other stuff now.
That's county-wide policy?
No, just Roden Bridge.
Just
County-wide, it's forty, Sheriff is eighty, but everybody else is forty.
Okay, I think we need to talk about that too.
So if they get called back in after they worked a whole day, then it's time and a half?
On an eight-hour day, it's
On the same day, they work, don't they, and they get called in, yes.
What happens at midnight? Do they have to start over?
I don't know when they're cut off.
You can work one day that week, and, you know, or two days, work a couple of, twelve-hour shifts and
The problem is, we were working the guys so long before we had regulations of how long they could work, then they would be totally exhausted by the end of the week, and so they needed to take off, but if they took off, then all this time over here wasn't overtime anymore. So that's why they went to, I, I mean, it's my vision, that's why they went, now, how does MODAT does it, how do the other ones do it, I don't know.
I don't know how you could be overworking somebody.
Can they, MODAT? They can't
Um, no, there's, you can work more than that. Obviously, uh, drive time, you can only log so many driving hours, so it all depends on, you know, if you're loading and doing different things, so, I mean, and they're local too, so, but, but there's a factor that comes into that, so you can probably work, I don't know, sixteen, twenty hours.
But most of the time, MODAT, I mean, they have a day shift and a night shift, so they switch back and forth, so you're either on days or you're on nights, so you're working your twelve, and then you're going home and not coming back for, cause you're either on days or on nights.
But how do they do, how do they do their overtime? What I was meaning.
I don't know.
Okay, I gotta go.
Okay, so, we got an agenda for next week, do you want me to add that to Tuesdays to continue the budget discussion?
I thought we were done today.
We're not done. We're not done.
Y'all lie to me so much.
Uh, I would rather do Wednesday or Thursday, we have auditors Monday and possibly Tuesday.
Are you guys available on Wednesday or Thursday?
I'm gonna tell you, I'm on four-hour days, by the way, so this is all overtime. Because budgets are counted double anyway, even though I didn't get fed a great meal.
Um, I think Wednesday's okay for me, um, I don't know, whatever.
Has to be paid for you though, not until
What do we gotta decide?
Salaries, who's the big one?
I already voted.
Oh, you didn't. Ask for
On, so Tuesday, I mean, we, we got a lot of appointments, we can be, we can run through our agenda on Tuesday, and if we could just finish it up.
I have Williams keepers here.
I said just the COLA.
Can we do it on Wednesday, starting at eight?
Take all
No, I got, yeah, I got
I just started at eight, I'm here eight anyway.
Take three percent.
Well, I'm here, yeah.
Divided by the number of employees, and then
Or do Wednesday or Thursday?
Or we can do like a, a thousand or fifteen, if we're gonna do it, I'd rather do it like early, and so we can, we still got the rest of the day to do some other stuff, cause I got some stuff I mean, get done before Christmas, and then probably need to start Christmas shopping next week sometime too.
Why so early?
I mean, I, I kick Williams keepers out, but they've already
Cause we're off on Monday, it's probably holiday for everybody, isn't it? Everybody's probably closed.
Yeah, that'd be a good shopping day.
You guys are all getting gas cards. Going to the, going to the, uh, convenience mart. Lottery tickets or gas cards?
What's your decision?
My chances are lottery.
Wednesday at eight?
Wednesday at eight.
Just tell me when to beer.
You'll get down during, babe?
It's overtime though, remember. Hey.
Gonna recess?
Yep.
Better get your two-point-oh multipliers for magnifying these.
Just public works or you want? Just public work.
I'm gonna recess till four-thirty.
I was just gonna say, that's just adjourned. Okay, I'm finally recessing, in case something comes up in the next thirty minutes.
Need to have some time.
Hi.
Hi.
Are you going to coffee in the morning?
Um, I will see. Um, I will see how...
You gotta get that too.
I gotta do the radio, but that's not till late thirty.
Oh, yeah, you got plenty of time to get out there. You can go to the meeting, and we can figure out what we talked about there, and then go talk down the radio. You can tell me if you want me to call, I want some questions, too. Hey, thank you, too. Appreciate you. Really? Come on, I'm trying to be nice. I was being serious. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, you're welcome, Jeff.
I know y'all are headache, I mean, I know we're headaches.
I know, I'm bothered.
We're still on, you know?
Oh, we are?
Yeah, we are.
Let's get that off.
See? I'm not gonna try to be nice anymore. That's it. I'm back to no...
The public heard you trying to be nice.
There you go.
And you're, you're...
Uh, we gotta get Michelle in here to shut things down, and... So it sounds like lottery tickets this year. Yeah.
Is it over there?
Is it over there?
Yeah, oh my gosh, it, you have to work that. I thought y'all moved it. It's been there the whole time, darling.
Oh, shoot.
No, when I used to do it, it was sitting over on that little round table along that wall over there.
We got some lighting issues going on here.
We got too many switches. Hit your head, watch your head.